Regular meeting of the county's Salary Board, to be followed by the Board of Commissioners meeting today, July 6th, 2023, 2:30 a.m. So we begin with our Salary Board meeting, and we'll call that to order and open with a roll call of members present.
Commissioner Heimler.
President.
Commissioner Dillibow.
President.
Commissioner Fauci.
I'm here.
I'm here.
Okay, thank you. All right, that leads us into a public comment period for any issues regarding salary board. Anything for sale? Has anything that we don't want? Okay, thank you. All right, that brings us to the minutes of June, our June 22 meeting of 2023. We'll begin a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of June 22nd.
Second. Moving seconded, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we have Salary Board actions before us today. A number of plans to be put through.
I'll make a motion to approve the Salary Board actions except for the sheriff's office.
I'll second.
Yes, moving seconded, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
Good morning, commissioners, I'll make the motion to approve the Salary Board actions for the sheriff's office.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, it's moving seconded, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, that brings us to other business before the Salary Board, additional, nothing on our can motion for adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Stand adjourned. That will bring us right to the Board of Commissioners meeting, so we ask for adjournments. Our place to the.
The elections to the flag of the United States and to the Republic, which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. We'll call meeting to order and begin with roll call members present.
Commissioner Heimler.
President.
Commissioner Fauci.
I'm here.
Commissioner Dillibow.
President.
Very good, thank you. That will, so that brings us to public comments on any non-agenda items. If you're here to speak on any item that's on agenda, we'll allow you to address it at the appropriate time, but if there's anything not on the agenda, you should address now, now's your time. Okay, seeing none, we'll hand it over to the Chief Clerk COO regarding our agenda.
Thank you, Commissioner. The consent agenda comprises agenda items four through eight, and these are a list of routine items. They do not appear to be controversial in nature and do not seem to require any additional discussion. If anybody wishes any of those agenda items to be discussed, now would be the time to make that request, and they will be moved after the consent agenda. Hey, hearing none, I would request approval of the consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I second.
It's moving seconded, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, commissioners. So the regular agenda is non-routine items that do require discussion, and the expectation will be that they will be acted upon individually by agenda item. And we'll start with agenda item number nine, and I'll call on Heather Tidwell. Heather is actually going to be covering many agenda items for us today. We will start with item nine regarding the DCED Emergency Solutions Grant.
Good morning. So the Emergency Solutions Grant has been in place for many, many years now, just because of the delay with the system and how DCED was a little behind on things. We're just getting everything kind of squared away on our end to officially approve the ESG contract. So that is for St. Barbara cares, we have rapid rehousing out of it, and the domestic violence shelter gets money out of it as well.
Any questions for Heather?
No.
I will move to approve the DCED Emergency Solutions Grant contract and award of $247,962 for the Cumberland County Housing Redevelopment Authority.
Second.
Okay, moving seconded, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, so Heather is also with us to talk about the home grant contract, grant contract and award. So the first one is for Luminesce. This is a operating grant for their project that this is basically money to help them with soft cost payroll, things like that, that comes through DCED because they have elected to be a CODO for this project. So this is just extra money that they are eligible for through the state. Any questions for Heather?
Our can motion. Make a motion to approve the DCED Home Grant Contract and Award of $268,955 for Luminesce for the Cumberland County Housing and Redevelopment Authority.
Second.
I second.
Yes, moving seconded, if there's no other questions, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
The next agenda item is also Heather, and it is regarding a home grant contract and award for Tri-County Housing Development Corporation.
So this is a similar operating cost, soft cost for Tri-County for another CODO project that they have asked for this additional funds to help out with.
Questions? I will move to approve the DCED Home Grant Contract and Award of $100,000 for Tri-County Housing Development Corporation for the Cumberland County Housing and Redevelopment Authority.
Second.
Okay, it's moving seconded, if there's no other questions, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, and the last agenda item for Heather is the Language Accessibility Plan.
So right now, since technically we are in between grant seasons for, and we're just basically in pavings seizing on my major grants right now, I'm taking the opportunity to update all of our policies and plans. The first one in front of you today is the Language Accessibility Plan. This plan basically is needed for CDVG, ESG, home, anything that basically comes out of our office goes along with this, that if someone does not have the accessibility of English as their first language or needs sign language, that we can present them this plan for resources and options to be able to communicate with them effectively. So this plan was just updated with basically the entities that are still in business post-COVID and a couple of social media and online options now available.
Questions for Heather?
Make a motion to approve the Language Accessibility Plan for the Cumberland County Housing and Redevelopment Authority as presented.
I second.
Okay, moving seconded, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Heather, nice to see you. Okay, agenda item 13, we have Carolyn Bletchley available on Zoom to discuss a letter of support for Joseph T. Simpson Public Library. Wow.
Good morning, commissioners. I am here today, but I have guests with me, Sue Erdman, the Director of the Simpson Public Library, and Karen Cochran, and she's in the back of your room right now, she's the Campaign Chair for the Capitol Campaign, and Jared Counterman, who works with me here at the office in the area of advancement. And they're asking for a letter of support from the commissioners to the McCormick Family Foundation for a grant that will help support the Simpson Learning and Book Sales Center. And so we've provided some sample language for that letter and just asking today for your support.
Any questions for Carolyn?
And actually, there are two foundations that were asking for letters for the other ones.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's okay, that's okay. Yeah. Thank you. I will move to approve the letter of support regarding an application submitted by the Joseph T. Simpson Public Library to the McCormick Family Foundation.
Second.
Okay, it's moving seconded, if there's no other questions, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And then, as mentioned, Carolyn also is here to discuss agenda item 14, which is a letter of support for the Joseph T. Simpson Public Library to the Conkall Foundation. Carolyn?
Yeah, so really nothing to add to that. It's a similar ask for a, another foundation, the Conkall Foundation, same project.
Or any questions?
Move to approve the letter of support, application submitted by the Joseph T. Simpson Public Library, excuse me, yes, by the Joseph T. Simpson Public Library to the Conkall Foundation.
I second.
Moving seconded, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, you're welcome to come if you don't want to stay. Thank you, meeting, thanks for coming. Okay, so the, the next section of the agenda is contracts, I'm going to turn everything over to Angela Smicer.
Thank you, Stacy. Good morning, everybody. Moving on to agenda item 15, I'm going to call on Jamie Reiber to discuss the contracts for children. Hi, Jamie.
Thank you, good morning, everybody. I have five contracts for the 23, 24 fiscal year. The first one is Common Sense Adoption Services. This is one of our foster care providers. They have three levels of care, each of them increasing their rate in the amount of $5 for this upcoming fiscal year. They are below the state maximum allowable rates and are, they are citing significant increases to room and board costs, so part of that increase is going towards the foster parents and the direct care that they provide to the youth, and also the addition of teaming with part, partnering, partnerships with Penn State School of Medicine to connect families for trauma-based therapy and additional trainings for their staff to also be trauma-informed and provide therapy for the, the youth. The next one is the Milton S. Hurchin Medical Center. This is for our child abuse record reviews. If we have a situation that needs to be looked at, that we're not quite sure, we get the team to look at the records and give their professional opinions on the child abuse findings. Their rate is increasing $5 this year, and they have a set rate that they, their, their board sets for them, so each county is paying the same amount of money. And so this is raising $5, and it's basically due to overhead costs increasing. The next one is Lisa Harrison, who runs our youth advocacy program for juvenile probation. She is increasing her rates for about 4%, and that is due to inflation and the increasing cost of the projects that the youth work on with her, and also for salaries. The next one is Children's Aid Society of Franklin County. They have a shelter residential program and foster care programs for us. They have increases ranging from 2.47% to 19.87%. They have these increases based on salaries, increased quality for the residential and shelter staff, and renovations that they're planning to do to the residential building, including technology updates and HVAC replacements for this upcoming year. The last one is Community Service Foundation. This also is a foster care provider, their rates are increasing 5% and 9.85%. And they are increasing the placement maintenance rates for their foster parents pretty significantly, actually. And then they also are stating that the increase in salaries, benefits, and operating costs as reason for their increases. Any questions?
No questions, we're looking for action on that. So I will move to approve the contracts for children and youth that set forth on the agenda at item 15 and is discussed this morning.
Second.
Okay, it's moving seconded, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Jamie.
Thank you.
Moving on to agenda item 16, I will call on Ryan Simon via Zoom to discuss the drug and alcohol contracts. Hi, Ryan.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm going to jump around a little bit. First, we have Mizetti and Sullivan Pyramid, Perry Human Services outpatient and addiction recovery, also known as ARS. They're some of our outpatient providers, and we would like to increase the adult case management outpatient individual and intensive outpatient individual rates from $84 an hour to $90 an hour. And then we would like to increase the adolescent case management outpatient and early intervention individual from $88 to $94 an hour. The reason for those increases are increased salary and benefit costs for our outpatient Catholic charities, they're asking for a $26 a day increase, that's 22% for their 3.1 level of care. The rate was reviewed by their home SCA and approved. I reached out to them, and the reason for their increased costs, they're citing massive increases in salaries and benefits. Fire Tree. For their Conawaygo Place, 3.5, they're asking for a $22 a day increase, that's 9%. For the Potsville location, 3.5, they're asking for a $14 a day increase. And for their Snyder location, 3.5, they're asking for a $15 a day increase. They also added 3.7 withdrawal management to that location, so we'd like to contract with that service there. And again, the reason for their increase is they noted increase in salary costs. Perry Human Services Prevention. We'd like to increase their contract max to $125,000 and $125,500, the $9,310 increase. The last time we increased this contract was in fiscal year 1718. Clear book treatment centers. They provide adolescents withdrawal management and 3.5 levels of care. Were required to have two adolescent inpatient providers. Currently, we only had one, so this will bring us into compliance on that. They just recently opened Daystar. They're asking for a $16 a day increase, that's 10%. Again, whenever I reached out to them, they noted an increase in salary and benefits. And then drug and alcohol rehabilitation services. They're asking for an $18 a day increase and a $6 a day increase. We started contracting with them three years ago, and this is their first increase. They noted, of course, salary and benefit increases. Any questions?
I have a question, Ryan. This Catholic charity is jumped, this 22% increase. I see that this is for low activity, the service is low activity. Ryan, what's that mean?
That, that is the new ACM term for a recovery house. Or, yeah. So basically somewhere for someone to stay, that's a safe environment. Whenever someone goes into treatment, they generally go into 3.7 withdrawal management, which we used to call detox. And then after that, they step down to 3.5, which used to be called rehab. And then after that, they go down to a 3.1, which is more of just a safe environment for them to be, but they also have a bit more freedom. It's not quite as intensive as the 3.5.
Okay, okay. And is this, is this giant increase because their original rate was pretty low?
Yes, they were one of the lower providers for that service. And also, DDAW with the ACM, they require more, more services at that level than what had previously been required. So I think they actually had to hire a couple of new staff, so there were some program changes that went along with this increase.
Thank you, thanks for answering my questions. Any other questions for Ryan?
Make a motion to approve the contracts for drug and alcohol as listed on agenda item 16.
I second.
It's moving seconded, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Ryan. Moving on to agenda item 17, I will call on Annie Stride to discuss the contracts for MHIDD. Good morning, Annie.
Good morning, all. So I have a total of eight contracts to present this morning, four of which are actually amendments from the prior fiscal year, so we'll start there. They are all early intervention amendments. The first is for Easter Seals of Western and Central Pennsylvania. The, we're requesting an increase of $1,300 to their current contract, and they provide sign language services for families, so that brings their total contract to $6,300. The next amendment is for the international corporate training and marketing, and the amendment that we're requesting is $19,380, and that's due to additional services, and they provide language interpretation services. That brings their contract to $71,460. The third contract is for Central Pennsylvania Therapy Connections, and that amendment is an increase of $6,011, and that's for additional services that were provided, and they provide language interpretation as well as occupational speech therapies for families. That brings their total contract to $55,296. And then the final amendment is for UPMC Pinnacle Hospitals, and that amendment is an increase of $54,781, and that's due to an increase of services. And they provide occupational, physical, and speech therapy as well as special instructions for families with children in early intervention services. That brings their total contract to $246,000. So those are the amendments for the prior fiscal year. Now we'll move to new contracts for the current fiscal year. The first contract is for early intervention specialists, and this is actually a decrease from last year, a decrease of $16,940. And for early intervention, they provide nutrition support, occupational, physical, and speech therapies, and special instruction. Their contract request is $100,693. The next contract is with Jana Vander Velden, and she provides physical therapy, and the contract request is for $26,789, which is actually a decrease of little over $8,000 from the prior year. And then the next contract is Shovlin Therapy Services, and Shovlin Therapy provides occupation, occupational therapy, and their contract request is for $23,226. And then the final contract is actually with Shredit, and that's a mental health contract, and obviously they provide shredding services for us. Their contract total is $5,541, and we are appreciative because finance helped us with this one, so we were able to secure a government rate, and with that, we're not being charged surcharge fees for fuel and trip. So that is going to be in a contract with an auto, automatic renewal for 36 months. And again, that contract total was $5,541, which is a small increase of $1,074. Do you have any questions for me?
Contracts for MHIDD as listed on our agenda at item 17.
Second.
Okay, moving seconded, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Annie.
Thank you.
Moving on to agenda item 18, I will call on Dana Best to discuss the contract for finance. Hi, Dana.
Good morning. So this contract is with Huggins Actuaries, Actuarial Services, and it's an actuarial review of our workers' compensation liabilities. We are self-insured for workers' compensation, so this, this service will set the required liability amount and also set the charges that we charge to our departments for workers' compensation, and it maximizes, helps us to maximize our state and federal dollars. Are there any questions? Oh, I forgot, this contract is increasing $277, making the contract amount $5,904.
Any questions for Dana? Looking for action on that, please.
Move to approve Huggins Actuarial Service contract for finance.
I second.
Seconded, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Dana.
Thank you.
All right. Joining us in person, I will call on Troy Smith to discuss the contract for court collections and court admin. Hi, Troy.
Hi. This contract is for services provided by Leinberger, Goggan, Blair, and Sampson Law Firm. They specialize in collections for government agencies. This will allow us to pursue collections for people mostly who are out of state where we are not sending our sheriffs to go after them to collect money. It is at no cost to the county as their 20% fee is added to their cost of fines and restitutions that they already owe, so the clients will be paying it. And we probably will utilize them also for people within the state who we have no good contact information for, everything's coming back, and we just, even though we have bench warrants issued, we can't find them. So it's a great tool to be able to try to get some more money for the county.
Any questions? Any questions? I will move to approve the Leinberger, Goggan, Blair, and Simpson LLP contract for court collections and court administration.
Second.
Seconded, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Troy.
Thank you.
Also joining us in the room, I will call on Melissa Meitzel to discuss the contract for tax administration and tax claims.
Good morning, commissioners. This is a contract for bid for assets to hold our yearly tax sales online. It keeps in line with our departmental goal of streamlining processes. Our tax options are normally held in the historic courthouse, and bidders come in and register for the tax sale about 45 days prior, and normally they come in the last two weeks. So we get a flood of bidders in, and so we service them, and it kind of creates a lot of chaos in the office, because not only that, we're getting phone calls, we're getting people coming in, paying their taxes, lots of questions, so it's a lot of stress, it's a stressful time. So I think moving the online, to an online auction platform will quiet that office a lot. They will do, they will register our bidders for us, they would hold the auction, they collect all the money, all the money comes back to the county, except for their 5% fee plus any, like 35, $70 administration fee they take off, that's added to the bid. So we get 100% of the money back, we get documentation of each sale, and so I think this will be an asset to the county doing business this way. This has come about mainly because of COVID, it's when tax sales are going online, NPA now, so we're just trying to jump on that and just ask for your approval. Any questions?
Yeah, make a motion to approve the bid for assets contract for tax administration tax bureau.
I second.
Okay, moving seconded, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Have a great day.
Enthusiastic, man.
Notice Mel did stay at the back of the room until after the motion. I will now hand the meeting back over to Stacy. Thanks, Angela. You're welcome. All right, that takes us then to agenda item 21, and we have Jennifer Givney also here with us to talk about the capital project request for domestic relations.
Good morning, I have to follow that enthusiasm.
What we're looking to do is upgrade our support master's hearing room to a hybrid courtroom. The reason that we need to do this is since COVID, we have clients who participate in person as well as those that need to participate by Zoom. In order to do the upgrade, we'll have monitors on the walls of the hearing room instead of just kind of turning around a laptop. This will allow the parties to have a seamless hearing, the parties can The parties can participate simultaneously and it just gives a much better professional hearing. And we will have sixty-six percent reimbursement from the federal government for this project.
I will move to approve the capital project request for domestic relations for the hearing officer hybrid hearing room with a total project cost of forty thousand two hundred and eighty-six dollars.
The question, one of the, the sheets indicates the cost is a thousand dollars less.
I'm sorry. The reason for the increase is that we need to get a computer from IMTO and they will be supplying it for a cost of approximately a thousand dollars.
Should that be noted somewhere?
It was to be noted in the, in the document. So I, I believe we have the original. We can certainly now just add, add that.
Okay, I'll second the motion.
Okay, second, and all in favor, keep saying aye.
Thank you very much.
And that was enthusiastic enough.
I wasn't sure if I should do a cheer or anything else. Have a great day. Thank you so much.
Okay, and next we have another capital project request from IMTO. This is for onsite backup and tape drive replacement. Adam Green is here to discuss.
We need to do twenty-two.
Unless I have a mess. Oh, no, I'm so sorry, Brent. I, I, some reason I checkmarked it. I apologize. We'll hold, hold that, hold that and we will actually cover agenda item twenty-two, which is a capital project request for facilities. And we have Brett Durham patiently waiting while I scan over him on Zoom. Morning, Brent.
Good morning, everyone. Before you, for your consideration as a capital project to remodel certain areas of IMTO office space. They've been in this area now for fifteen years and over that time their staff has grown along with the services they provide. Remodeling this space will accommodate for that growth as well as provide improved workflow and efficiency. We'll be replacing the carpet during this project. The carpet in the area is torn. It snagged and overall it's in very poor condition. And I think it's actually the oldest carpet in the courthouse at this time. I'm also proposing that we upgrade the lighting from T-eight lighting to LED lighting, light fixtures. By upgrading the area will be more energy efficient. Less maintenance will be required as the new lights have a five-year warranty. And as a bonus, PPNL does offer incentives for upgrades such as this that we will be applying for. On a positive note, we are able to make use of several donated station, workstations that we received earlier this year. However, we do not need to purchase, however, we do need to purchase two new units. And those new units are included in this amount. The total amount of the capital request is sixty-nine thousand five hundred dollars. Any questions?
How old is the oldest carpet in the courthouse?
I think their carpet that dates back to nineteen ninety-eight or ninety-nine. I'm not exactly sure.
And we, we kept the low-level lighting in so they couldn't notice the carpet. Is that, I'm going to take my weight off this.
Make a motion to approve the capital project request for facilities, Ryan, TPO office renovations and upgrades. The total project cost of sixty-nine thousand five hundred dollars.
A second.
Move a second, all in favor, keep saying aye.
Now we're going to cover the capital project request for IMTO. Adam Green presenting.
Good morning, commissioners. This project is to replace the county's entire backup system. So every server, every file goes into the system. We have one here. We have one that's down in the public safety building. And it's also air gap with tapes for the longer retention period. It's all aged out. It's all life-cycled out. So we're asking to replace that. Total project cost for the new equipment is fifty-three thousand six hundred and eight dollars.
Any questions, Ryan? We'll move to approve the capital project request for IMTO for onsite backup and tape drive replacement with a total project cost of fifty-three thousand six hundred and eight dollars.
Second. Movement and second, all in favor, keep saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, we have another capital project request for IMTO and deramations here to discuss.
All right, commissioners. I'm here to request the purchase of a dedicated, highly reliable internet connection. This internet connection will serve as a backup to our existing one. The existing one functions, allows connectivity for the DJs to come in, any websites that we offer to the public, things like that. So with things going to the cloud, it's becoming increasingly clear that we need another backup connection in the event that the main one goes down. This could, this, the cost of this will be a thousand eight dollars and thirty-five cents per month for this connection. And the project includes two additional network cards that we need to accommodate this as well as a block of sixty-four static IPs that we would need to lock connectivity. Questions?
Motion. Motion. Make a motion to approve the capital project request through IMTO network redundancy connection with a total project cost of sixty-five thousand five hundred.
A second.
Okay, move it second, and all in favor, keep saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Yeah, agenda item twenty-five is a capital project request for public safety for nine-one-one communication schedule software. We have Bob Jibley joining us to discuss.
Morning commissioners, requesting your approval of a capital project for nine-one-one communication scheduling software. Not to exceed sixty-eight thousand dollars. Public Safety has been working with IMTO and ERP to review several options to automate the nine-one-one scheduling software. We currently, our payroll is managed through the UKG. But our staffing and position management by qualification and position is done manually with a spreadsheet in four-hour blocks. The software would let us automate that background process for the schedule itself in the nine-one-one center and hopefully make that all more efficient for our schedulers. So I have talked to the prison. I know Warden Shank would also be interested. And we've looked at several options and demos and we have three different options. But again, it's a not to exceed sixty-eight thousand, so.
Move to approve the capital project request for public safety for the nine-one-one communication schedule software with a total project cost of sixty-eight thousand dollars.
Second. Okay, it's moved in second. Questions, all in favor, keep saying aye.
Aye. Any questions? So we'll move on then to agenda item twenty-six, and this is a capital project request for the register of wills. We have Lisa Grayson joining us. Good morning, Lisa. This is for the digitization of marriage records from forty to seventy-six.
Right. So I have two contracts. The first one is cheap comparatively. It is to digitize our marriage records. The more recent ones, the most recent ones, we already have digitized. So this will digitize the next newer group of records. We've been getting lots of requests for certified marriage records for the real ID. And currently it's a manual process for my folks. And so to be able to get this digitized will save some staff time and make it more efficient to get those documents out to, to the public. This is Reynolds. We, we actually took bids on this and they were the cheapest bids. And it's our understanding that several offices have worked with Reynolds and IMTO says they're very good to work with. So I don't have any concerns with the contractor.
Make a motion to approve the capital project request for register of wills for the digitalization of marriage records from nineteen forty to nineteen seventy-six, total project cost twenty-seven thousand.
A second.
Okay, moving second, and all in favor, keep saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, and as Lisa mentioned, she has a second capital project request. She mentioned it's a little bit more expensive than, than the one she presented. So I'll turn it back over to her.
Thank you. And actually, on the last one with Reynolds, we are using our own automation money to pay for that. So it won't count, count cost the county anything. On the, on the next contract, this is with GovOS. They are our current case management system providers. And our contract is up in October. So we have to address it. We are actually asking to expand what they currently provide for us. Currently they provide our entire case management system and we're adding, would like to add three modules. And that is to allow for e-filing, e-probate and e-marriage petition. That cost, we initially worked with GovOS in twenty-twenty-one when they first offered this. It was in the throes of COVID and they produced these modules. And the five-year cost, if we had taken it then, would have been over a half a million dollars just for those three modules that and the current ongoing maintenance for our case management system. Frankly, I found that absolutely ludicrous to pay that kind of price despite COVID. And so we revisited it again now that we have to update our case management system. I have to tell you, we negotiated back and forth. We, I really played hardball with them because they knew while I wanted these systems and the local counties around us, Dolphin County, New York County already have this ability. So we would be staying with our, our like counties. I, I really pushed back on the price. And the final price in the numbers that you have before you is a three hundred thousand dollar savings over what it would have cost in twenty-twenty-one. And what we negotiated down, even from the initial numbers that they gave us in February of this year. And what we negotiated down was a savings of sixty-two thousand dollars. So we really have pushed with them to get them to come in more in line with what I think is a reasonable cost. To pay for this, part of it will come out of our automation funds and part of it will just be budgeted in our normal budget process. And while this is an expensive upgrade, we are looking at adjusting some of our filing fees to cover the cost, the increased cost that it will be to our, our annual budget. In addition to just our case management system and the e-filing components. Also a part of this contract is converting our current documentation in our case management system over to a PDFA format so that we comply with the state archival standards. So that, that's a two-point-six million document, document that we currently have will be converted over to that PDFA. And going forward annually, they will update our records each year to convert them to a PDFA format. Like we can't work with PDFA in our normal daily work because we have to be able to modify the document. So this will be for archival purposes. So it's, it's dual-fold.
Any questions for Lisa?
We have.
I will move to approve the capital project request for register of wills for a case management software upgrade with a total project cost of two eighty-four, three nine, one nine.
Second. Okay, second, and for the questions, all in favor, keep saying aye.
Thanks, Lisa.
Very much.
And that takes us to agenda item twenty-eight, which is commissioners liaison reports. And I'll start by calling on Commissioner Robert.
Very briefly, I did check in with Annie today. So we did the MHD contracts. And he asked if we had any additional information versus budget situation. And she said there's, we're still in wait C mode in terms of more information. So nothing on that as of this morning. I talked to Justin Miller and he mentioned to me that he compiled some year-to-date numbers for the e-recycling. We've had one thousand seven hundred and seventy-one customers. That's through the end of June for six months of the year. Total of one hundred twenty-six thousand, we're thirty-seven pounds, one twenty-six, four thirty-seven. So obviously continued strong demand for the recycling function that we're offering now. That's everything I have.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Good morning, everyone. I would remind you to use the Cumberland County Library System. It is a great partner in your summer funds. So you can read a book, you could check out one of those backpacks and go and investigate your outdoor surroundings, really terrific offerings at the library. So HATS met on June twenty-third, which is the Harrisburg Area Transportation Study. So the post-road improvement study is done. And our own Kirk Stoner believes that the recommendations in this study strike a balance between being forward-looking and meeting the current needs of our users while making important connections between the army barracks and the surrounding neighborhoods. So the study is available. I have it in my hand. It's available online at the HATS website. But the, the recommendation is to put in a very nice sidewalk that will also allow for pedestrian movement. There's actually a note in the project update that says that bicyclists, even though there will not be a dedicated bicycle lane, they could actually get on the sidewalk if they wanted to. There will be some realignment. It will minimize impacts to rights of ways, utilities and the environment. So very interesting study. And available online. I-81 in US eleven fifteen, there is some lighting projects going on there because the current lighting facilities for the limited access interchange do not meet current lighting criteria. So that project is going to be underway. The regional congestion management plan, the draft scope of work has been submitted to SRTP. So if you have any questions about that, you want to go ahead and contact Steve Deck on that one. And the pipeline review for the tip. That process has, has begun to be ready for tip development later this year. So municipal outreach will follow from HATS on that. Adding things to the tip, that's really important. I will be keeping an eye on that to make sure that our municipalities know about. So it's time to add your projects to the tip. And that is what I have.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner DePulipo.
Yes, Conservation District met on June twenty-seventh. There are four ag B and P projects, so Conservation Excellence Granted Program that just finished up and will be certified shortly. The Conservation District Board of Directors approved West Pinzburrows application for a future project on Greethill Road. Grant approved for the project is a hundred and thirteen thousand. Board of Directors also approved an application from Upper Midland Township for a future project on Bridgewater Road under the Dirt and Gravel Program. First two applications under the ACAP program. And that is the Agricultural Conservation Assistance Program. Were approved by the Conservation District Board. Also Carl Goshore presented budgets and agreements to be approved for a watershed specialist and an ag conservation technical position. Chesapeake Bay engineer and two Chesapeake Bay technicians and nutrient management specialist. These will all be covered with non-county funds. A concept was presented to the board. Excuse me, about hiring a part-time technical person to help review post-construction store water management plans. And this would free up our engineer, Mike Lubinski, to complete the other projects. Funding for this position will come out of the clean water fund and no county subsidy will be needed. Conservation District Board agreed that this would be in the twenty-twenty-four budget. But commissioners would need to approve the position. That's all I have. Stacy.
Thank you, commissioners. And that takes us to agenda item twenty-nine. I'd like to report that an executive session was held on June twenty-eighth at one forty PM regarding possible litigation. And also on June twenty-ninth at nine-thirty AM regarding personnel. Is there any other business to come before the board today?